Give you a minute just to get, take your breath. There you go. All right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Leewood Governing Body. The meeting will please come to order and the clerk will call the rule.
Mayor Elkins is present in presiding. Councilmember Phylla?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Sipple?
Here.
Councilmember Kane is absent. Councilmember Sunkel?
Here.
Councilmember Gayad?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Castor?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Chair of Fine State of Quorum is present this evening. We'll move on to the business of the evening. With that, I would ask everyone to stand and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Does staff have any amendments or changes to the agenda beyond those that were published earlier today?
No.
Thank you. If not, I would ask if there's a motion to approve the agenda as it was amended earlier in the day today.
Moved. So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Harrison, is there a second?
Second, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Sipple, all those in favor of approving the agenda as it was amended earlier in the day, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the agenda is approved. There were no citizens that signed in to make public comments tonight, so we'll move on to proclamations, and I have a number of important proclamations to announce tonight. First, and it is so difficult, Councilmember Harrison and I were talking, it's difficult to believe that 10 years have passed since this tragic moment in our community, but indeed it has been 10 years. And so as a result, please take note that whereas Seven Days, a Make a Ripple, Change the World, strives to overcome hate by promoting kindness and understanding through education and dialogue, and provides opportunities encouraging all people to participate in activities that promote and practice kindness, and whereas Seven Days 2024 will commemorate its 10th anniversary focused on teaching kindness, making a ripple to change the world, and whereas Seven Days 2024 begins its events on Wednesday, April 10th, with the Kindness Breakfast, pardon me, a celebration of youth and announcement of the Fourth Annual Ripple of Kindness Award recipient, as well as our new Community Kindness Festival on Sunday, April 14th, at the Jewish Community Center, and whereas Seven Days continues its daily themes of love, discover others, connect, you, go, and onward, as we bring all people from walks of life together to overcome hate with acts of kindness, and whereas the memories of three wonderful and unique people, Ritt Underwood, Dr. William Corperin, and Terry Lamano, will be honored through kindness and understanding, and whereas Seven Days expands its acts of compassion, acceptance, and understanding to those who gather, and whereas the city of Leewood fully supports and encourages all in Leewood, including residents, businesses, organizations, and visitors, to come together during the seven days to act more kindly and be more understanding of differences, thereby making the world a better place, one ripple at a time. Now therefore I, Mark Elkins, Mayor of the City of Leewood, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 10th through April 18th, 2024, as Seven Days of Kindness in the city of Leewood, and urge all citizens to engage in acts of kindness throughout the week and remember the events of April 13, 2014. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Leewood to be affixed this first day of April 2024. I would ask that Lama Matt Rice, please step forward to accept the city's best wishes and in our proclamation, and please feel free to tell us a little bit about the Seven Days event.
Well, I would just want to say thank you, Mayor Elkins, and I also want to thank the City Council of Leewood for being a Seven Days kindness city and spreading ripples of kindness to change our world. We appreciate your support of kindness in your community, as well as the greater Kansas City community as well. After those horrific events in 2014, it's just amazing to see the families and especially the community like Leewood come together to rally around those who were hurt in those situations, to let people know that hate doesn't belong here in Leewood, that we can combat hate by spreading kindness. Seven Days, we understand that hate is not born in us, hate is taught, and while we're born to love and be loved, kindness can also be taught. We teach kindness all year round, but especially in April, around the time of those horrific events, by focusing on kindness through the variety of themes over multiple days throughout the weeks. Those themes that you talked about with love, discover, discover, others, connect, you, go, and onward, allow us in our community to learn something new, meet someone who we didn't know before, and find yourself more willing to offer kindness to those in whom you would typically not associate. A person you once considered an other is surely to become a friend. So again, I do want to invite you all and everybody in this room, and of course in the city, to join us April 10th, bright and early 7:30 for our Kindness Breakfast at the Church of the Resurrection here in beautiful Leewood, as well as our Kindness Festival on April 14th at the Jewish Community Center. You can find more at our website, www.giveseventdays.org, or follow us on social media on all of our platforms at @giveseventdays. Thank you.
Thank you. Lama Rice, if you'd step forward. I guess we get to take a picture here, so. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Lama Rice, thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you for being here.
At this point, I would invite Chris Claxton to come forward. Chris, it's a little bit bittersweet. We're used to seeing Mr. Anderson at that podium for this annual event. I think it's probably been what, 20 years or more that we have been making this declaration, and this will be the first one in Brian's absence, but we appreciate your being here. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore I, Mark E. Elkins, Mayor of the City of Leewood, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Leewood, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and planting trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Leewood to be affixed this first day of April 2024. And as a boy who grew up in the Flint Hills, trees are particularly important and impressive to me, and I appreciate the commitment that Leewood has always shown to preserving and expanding our trees. So Chris, thank you very much. If you could accept this on behalf of the city, I would be grateful, and Stephen wants to give us, if you can turn just a little bit, well, Stephen's got a picture he wants to take, so. We'll figure out a better way to do this. Do you have any words that you'd like to share with us concerning Arbor Day?
Yes, Mayor. Chris Claxton, Director of Parks Recreation and Arts, as you mentioned. I'd also like to mention that we have been a Tree City USA for 27 years, which is pretty impressive, and we do have some signage around the city indicating that. So we, staff, and I know the city is very committed to keeping our tree inventory and, you know, all through the parks and the parkway, very committed to that cause, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you for your department's commitment to protecting our trees.
Thank you.
Now, I would invite Amy Hansen to step forward, please. Welcome, Ms. Hansen.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. I am the new Community Outreach and Outcomes Coordinator, otherwise known as the Kook, for, and I like that title, quite frankly, for the Kansas Children's Service League. And April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, which is a big deal for us, to try and get the word out, get the message out. I've only been there a few months, so I'm going to introduce my colleague Rebecca to you. She has been with our organization for over four years, so she has all the good info.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen. Rebecca, welcome.
Hello. Hi. Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about what we do as an agency to help prevent child abuse and neglect. So we are a home visiting agency that's designed to improve parent-child interactions to then reduce instances of child abuse and neglect. We have been an agency with Kansas for over 130 years, and we believe that each day presents a new opportunity to build a strong foundation for our future, and that really, us as a community, all have a part in helping prevent that child abuse and neglect in our community. So nation, or countywide, we serve over 44 counties in Kansas, including Johnson County. We work primarily with prenatal mothers and families with young kids three months of age and all the way up to age three, to provide meaningful parent-child interactions, developmental assessments, and connections with community resources, to help build that bond between families and their new children, as well as empower the parents as well. In just this past year of 2023, our team served 150 individuals in the Johnson County area and provided home visits that include social supports, health and safety resources, child development and parenting supports, as well as, again, providing those necessary referrals to community resources. 95% of those families that we worked with did not have any substantiated child abuse or neglect, which is our goal. 91% of those children that were enrolled by the end of the year had a developmental screen in the last six months, and 100% of those children in our program had a primary health insurer and physician. So in short, we appreciate the support in helping us spread the message that prevention is hard, but it's, it is what we do and what we're very passionate about. We listen to families to lift them up, and we hope to create stronger family units and a stronger community.
Rebecca, thank you very much for your leadership, and if you wouldn't mind stating your last name and your business address, for our record, we'd be grateful.
Sure. Rebecca Troop.
Thank you, Rebecca. Now, it's my pleasure on behalf of the city of Leewood to note that whereas children are our nation's most vulnerable members, as well as our nation's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of Leewood, and whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family, and whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community in the U.S., and financing solutions require input and action from everyone, and whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the socially-emotional and developmental well-being of children, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families, and whereas children who live in families with access to concrete, economic, and social support are less likely to experience abuse and neglect, and whereas we acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling and sharing, center the needs of families, break down bias and barriers, and inspire action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention, and whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and their families. Now therefore I, Mark E. Elkins, Mayor of the City of Leewood, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and in testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Leewood to be affixed this first day of April 2024. I'll make this a little less awkward for Stephen this time. There you go. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your leadership. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I have one more proclamation this evening, and this is an issue that is very near and dear to my heart and many others here in the city. Unfortunately, a representative of the organization was unable to join us this evening, but nonetheless, we'll make sure that she gets this proclamation. Whereas Leewood is a community of compassion and dedicated to being a wonderful place to live and raise a family, and whereas every family faces challenges that require faith, love, and hope, and whereas autism affects millions of people in the United States, according to the CDC, one in 36 children and one in 45 adults have autism in the United States, and whereas autism does not discriminate and can impact anyone, and those with autism, no matter their age, are our friends and family members, work colleagues, school peers, church members, and neighbors, and whereas their priorities for Autism Awareness Month are to spread awareness among the general public about the potential and needs of individuals with autism, and to maximize the importance of early diagnosis and early intervention, and to stress the significance of providing appropriate supports in both childhood and adulthood. Now therefore I, Mark E. Elkins, Mayor of the City of Leewood, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Leewood, and encourage all citizens to provide their support in furthering and spreading awareness and education about autism. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Leewood to be affixed on this first day of April 2024. Stephen, you'll take care of getting this to the right place, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the proclamations this evening. And we have no additional presentations or recognition, and no special business, so that brings us to the consent agenda. Are there items that members of the governing body wish to pull from the consent agenda for additional discussion? Yes, Ms. Phylla. Item C. Others? If there are no others, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item C. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Ms. Gayad. Thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda and the items on it, with the exception of item C, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda, with the exception of item C, is unanimously approved. That does bring us to Section C, approval of mayoral appointments of citizen volunteers for committees, commissions, and boards of effective April 1st, 2024. Ms. Phylla.
I just wanted to express my gratitude for the fact that folks will continue to serve. We have so many talented people, and they're willing to up for another term, and then you look at the resumes of the folks that are newly joining these volunteer organizations, and again, we are so blessed, and I just wanted to put a big old thank you for this second round of appointments made, and I know it's a big job for you, so thanks for doing it, and thanks for everyone who encourages people to get involved in We the People. With that, I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Phylla, and I will say there is one more tranche to be done, and we'll have those at the next meeting, hopefully, so.
The good times, the good times keep happening, come happening, right?
Exactly. So there's a motion to approve item C, which consists of my mayoral appointments through April 1st, 2024, and I will note that these, the effective date of these terms will go back to March 1, and so the terms, depending on whether they're two-year, or three-year, or one-year terms, will all end on February the 28th of their respective years. So with that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving item C relating to my mayoral appointments, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and those mayoral appointments are approved. Thank you very much for your support, everyone. Takes me to the mayor's report this evening, a relatively light report, which we made up for with the proclamations, but the proclamations were very important. I would note that on Thursday, March 21st, I was a guest of the Leewood Welcomers, a longstanding social organization here in Leewood, where I presented an abbreviated version of my state of the city address. I would be remiss if I did not mention that, as I discussed, taxes. I was challenged by one member of the Welcomers who told me not to apologize for the taxes that we assessed, because she was quite proud to pay those taxes and to receive the city benefits that she receives as a citizen. So there's one citizen out there that appreciates the work that the city does and the services the city gives to our citizens of Leewood, and as I said, I would be remiss if I had not noted that. Secondly, last Friday, the city of Leewood hosted, and I hope I pronounce this correctly, a Ramadan Iftar with the members of the Dialogue Institute of Kansas City. This was the second time that I'd had the privilege of participating, and it's really a great event, and I hope that others will join in the future. We had a great turnout from the city. Particularly, I want to thank members of the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Planning Department for their attendance. For those of you For those of you who do not know, the Ramadan Iftar is the evening meal that breaks the fast observed by Muslims during the holy month of Ramadan. As I said, it is an event that's shared by Leewood residents of all faiths and Muslims, and is an opportunity to learn about the Islamic traditions of Ramadan, and it was very informative. So again, my thanks to the Leewood City staff who attended, and we look forward to hosting another Iftar next year. It's really a great event. On April 20, this is just a reminder, then, that on April 21st, that invitations have gone out to the Presidents of Leewood Homeowners Association Presidents for a conference with city staff and the governing body on April 21. We've nearly finished the agenda, and we'll be distributing it in the near future. Please note for the members of the city council that each of you, together in pairs, will be asked to lead breakout groups with the Presidents of the HOAs in your wards to solicit input on the issues of concern to those HOAs and their members. We will provide you with a couple of discussion points to kick things off if you need to. My experience is the HOAs are not bashful, so my guess is you won't need a lot of priming to them. But again, there are a couple of issues that the city staff is interested in. In addition, the city staff will be making a presentation on April 21st to the homeowner associations to bring them up to date on current initiatives that the city staff has underway at our instruction. Last, and certainly not least, of the greatest importance, is that I want to recognize the service of a citizen of our city who has worked tirelessly over the last 20 years to make this a better city for all of us, and that is my good friend here, Ms. Phila, who is just as busy as she can be, but she is always busy on things that make our city a better place. And this month, she celebrates her 20th anniversary of service on the Leewood City Council, and so I just wanted to thank her and recognize her for that. Ms. Phila, do you have comments?
I just, I want to say what a joy it is to participate. I have learned so much. I've grown up with the staff and with fellow council members, and it is a privilege to listen to those who have noted something that's lacking and just follow that lead, and it's always been a great, great guide. If someone comes and they're interested in a community garden, we look at that, and so those are the kinds of things that we want to lead with our citizens' input, and that's been a real treat. So thank you. It's been, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phila. We greatly appreciate your leadership and all the service you've provided over the last two decades.
And the grace for always being right on the edge of the start of the meeting.
You were right on time. It's what you were, just on time.
Mary's falling in my footsteps.
And with that, that concludes my report this evening, and I believe that Ms. Stoddard has a couple of comments for us to give us a little bit of an idea of some really interesting activities that are coming our direction. So Diane, if you care to proceed, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. I just wanted to provide a little bit of an update for you related to the strategic plan work that we are planning to be embarking on. We received several really great proposals for the strategic planning work, and Mayor Elkins, Mr. Powell, and myself visited with two of the firms, and will be bringing to you at your next meeting an agreement for consideration with the KU Public Management Center to lead the city in assisting with the strategic plan work. And generally, the process will unfurl over four different phases, beginning later this month, provided that agreement is approved, and then stretching to, we kind of envisioned probably being in a position to bring something forward to all of you for final approval at some point in September. But it would have different phases, including information gathering, so they would prepare some demographic information and some other contextual information that will help set the stage for your discussion about strategic planning, and this would be, again, in lieu of the typical goal-setting session that we've done annually. So this will be a little more strategic-focused, where we're looking kind of at about a two-to-four year time horizon, and how we can proceed with some objectives that get you to where you all would like to go based on your discussions. That information gathering will also consist of the reports that will be coming to you from the resident satisfaction survey, and will also have some other inputs like the HOA meeting that the mayor mentioned. That'll be some good backdrop for you as you discuss this. As part of the information gathering, KU would also be doing interviews individually with each of you and with the members of the city's management team. That would be roughly in April and May, and the phase two would be in May or June, and it would involve some employee meetings to gather some input on some draft of values, as one of the processes here will be helping solidify the city's mission, vision, and values, and the employees will be helping kind of draft a set of values for you all to consider as you all have a planning retreat, and we're going to be asking if you can set aside about a seven-hour timeframe on a Saturday for that discussion. So that would be at some point between mid-May and mid-June, or mid to late June, and I think that would achieve, I know Councilmember Kane had a desire to have some amount of discussion, at least prior to the budget discussions. Phase three would involve a four-hour planning retreat with the governing body and the management team in July, and that would be sort of distilling the information that comes out of the first session and give us some ability to identify some major focus areas for the strategic plan, and then KU would round this out with a meeting with the management team, kind of training us on developing some measurable objectives that will be, then, we'll draft for the plan, and that will all come back before you for consideration, then, as I mentioned, probably in September. So in total, there would be the one-hour interview that you would spend with KU individually in April, May, a one-day retreat, probably about seven hours in May to June, and a half-day retreat in July, and then time at a previously scheduled council meeting at some point, probably in September, then for KU to present the final draft plan for your consideration. So again, this will be on your agenda next week, but I wanted to spend a little time in foreshadowing what you might expect with that. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Stoddard. I keep looking at Mary like she's got something she wants to say, but I'm not sure.
I would just say, for the seven, thank you, Mayor, for the seven-hour portion, the sooner we get that on the calendar, the better. Just, the calendar's kind of filling up already.
Yes, thank you. I imagine that that and the July meeting will be a little bit challenging to get over base schedules to sync up.
Yeah, fingers crossed. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Stoddard?
I was going to say the same thing.
Yeah, I think this is an important exercise. Again, as you all know, and you're probably tired of hearing me talk about, we're in a period of transition with the city in a lot of different ways, leadership, both on the governing body and in the mayor's office, as well as in the city clerk's office and the city administrator's office, and this is just an excellent time for us to sit down and review vision, mission, values, and use those then as guiding principles for strategic goals as opposed to tactical goals going forward. So we will do our best. As soon as we have a contract signed, we will be looking for a date for you all. Anything else, Ms. Stoddard? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to old business, I believe, we have this evening. We're going to take items A and B up kind of simultaneously, because they're all around the same nucleus of operative fact, and I will say just a couple of introductory remarks before Ms. Claxton and Mr. Cobbie come forward. Obviously, this has, especially for the incumbent members of the governing body, this topic concerning the purchase and installation of reaching the piece of art sculpture to celebrate the city's 75th anniversary has a long history, a history that has had some controversy associated with it, but at this point, we're kind of at the point where we need to bring this to a conclusion. I think that there are really two issues for us to consider tonight, and I would ask that you keep those in mind as Ms. Claxton and Mr. Cobbie make their presentations. Number one is a decision that I think that we need to make regarding whether or not we move forward with the installation of the art piece only, or include the construction of a small parking lot that is associated with it. The materials that you received as part of the agenda packet indicates that we had it bid separately as two different costs, but we need to make a decision as to whether we go forward with the entire package or simply the installation. And then secondly, you saw in your packet information about some of staff's ideas with respect to how we fund the installation and/or the parking lot. Pardon me, after I received that memorandum of middle to late last week, I went back to staff and asked them for some additional thoughts and alternatives on how to fund this. We spent some time together today, and so you'll be hearing a couple of other alternatives to the ones that were in your memo. I'm sorry that we didn't have that written out in advance, but we put pencil to paper today, and hopefully, we'll have addressed some of the concerns that have been expressed over the years with respect to the cost here. So with that, I would invite Ms. Claxton to come forward, and she, and I think Mr. Cobbie will be tag-teaming this, but Chris, if you could start, and again, part of the intent here with the materials that you all received was for our three relatively new council members, as well as myself, to become more familiar with the history of this thing and the issues that were associated with it. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Claxton, and please proceed, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. The first order of business is the Second Amendment, if you wanted me to address that, to the artist contract, which is Curious Forms. We did have a previous amendment, number one, and that was for an extension of time. This amendment is for an extension of time on or before July 1st, also including the storage of the piece not to exceed $7,500, and then also the transportation of the piece at $16,000. So those are the things in the amendment, number two, that need to be discussed. And so.
Let's go ahead and go forward, and we'll talk about the overall topic, then come back and look at the individual resolutions, if you don't mind.
Okay. So the mayor is correct in saying that he, Ms. Stoddard, myself, Mr. Cobbie met this morning, again, looked at everything in terms of the funding mechanism, and funding, really, either way, we, as the mayor mentioned, made some adjustments to what you saw previously at some of the ideas of where to take the funds. We feel confident that we can take all of the funds for both the installation of the sculpture and the parking lot out of the Special Park Fund, without that having any impact on any of the projects we currently have planned. So I don't know if you want to make some more comments about that, some of the...
Probably do. Yeah, I might clarify a couple of things that were in the memo. I think we had put together a plan talking about repayment, if that was an option. It really was just given as an option, more so in my mind that if we were to take the funds, there was, I guess, there was some objection to being from the Special Parks and Rec Fund. You can borrow from another fund as long as you pass some kind of resolution to pay yourself back, and that was the purpose. We could borrow it from other sources, but I would also agree that knowing kind of what the numbers are now, knowing what we have available in the Special Parks and Rec Fund, we're not going to reduce the balance by that much. It's really only $150,000 more in the Special Parks and Rec from what we had planned, and from a cash flow perspective, we know that probably the expenditures on the pickleball court, which is the biggest expenditure next year, is going to drag into maybe partial, but we're not going to spend all those funds. So from that perspective, we could pay for both the parking lot and the installation expenditures out of that, and then I think the other ideas that were proposed, again, were more just options of reducing trail maintenance and doing some other things, kind of to help make the cost come more, you know, basically go back, the art fund carrying more of that cost, and of course, that's a policy decision for you to make, but I just wanted to, from an actual funding standpoint, we put $500,000 in the budget from Special Parks and Rec, and now we're at $650,000 with the proposal that's in here, and I don't have any concerns about us being able to cover that or impacting future budgets at this time.
Thank you, Dawn. Before I ask Dawn and Chris to stand for questions, pardon me, my allergies are kicking up today. Let me summarize the options, and I'll look to Dawn and Chris to correct me, but I want to give a little more specificity what the options are here. So the first decision, of course, is parking lot, or I'm sorry, installation or installation plus parking lot. These are round numbers that I wrote down, so please don't hold me to the absolute dollars and cents, but the installation bid that we received was about $485,000. The parking lot cost was about $165,000, which includes provision for our city staff with David Lay and his team to be doing some of the work there. So the total all-in for both element A and element B is approximately $650,000. It strikes me that there are three options for how we finance or fund that purchase. Number one is the one that you saw in the memo that you received as part of the packet tonight, and that is what I refer to as the kind of internal loan approach, and what that would entail is that $194,000 would come out from the capital improvement for the arts. The maintenance budget for the trail would be reduced by $50,000. The balance would come from the Special Parks Fund, and the idea would be that the CIP would, over the period of four to five years, depending on whether we take option A or option B in terms of what we're going to build, to reimburse the Special Parks Fund. So that was what you saw in your packet last week. The other two alternatives that staff worked with me to come up with, for you all to consider, is option B would be to fund this with a combination of the CIP for Art and the Special Parks Fund, but would not look to reduce any of the budget for trail maintenance, and it would not call for reimbursement to the Special Parks Fund for what was taken from the Special Parks Fund to finance this. So essentially, that would be, again, round numbers, $194,000 from the CIP for Art and $456,000 or so from the Special Park Fund. Hopefully, that adds up to about $650,000, but it's the concept I want you all to be aware of here, and again, we would not attempt to reimburse the Special Parks Fund for this. As Dawn mentioned, the Special Parks Fund has excess funds in it right now, and through this process, we could fund both the parking lot and the installation, not have an impact on our park maintenance, not have an impact on the user experience in our trails, I may have said park maintenance, I meant to say trail maintenance, my apologies, and not have an impact on existing park projects that we have already approved and are in the process of either building or starting the construction on. the process of either building or starting the build, the construction on. The third option, then, would be to fund the entire amount, which Don tells me is possible, to fund the entire 650 from the Special Park Fund. We would have no, no reduction in the trail maintenance, we would have no reimbursement from back into the Special Park Fund, and this would leave a balance of about $194,000 in the, the art CIP for additional acquisitions if, if we decide as a governing body down the road that we want to. So it basically would, the other two options, we would take $194,000 out of the CIP for Art, and that would basically create a hiatus for us, if you will, or a moratorium for a short, for a period of time. I won't characterize whether it would be short, medium, or long term. So hopefully, I've articulated those clearly enough that those are three options that are out there. I guess with that, I have a tendency to get ahead of myself, and I want to hear what all you have to say and the questions that you may have for Don and Chris. So with that, I'll open up the floor to questions to staff, and, and we'll just kind of mix that with discussion as well. So it's hard to draw a line between questions and discussion. So with that, I'll open the floor. Questions from Ms. Claxton or Mr. Cobby? Ms. Larson.
I'm curious about the Special Parks Fund and how it is that we have extra money in the Special Parks Fund, and what impact, if we use the money from the Special Parks Fund, what impact does that have on our facilities and programs?
Thank you, Ms. Larson. So one of the things that impacted the amount that we have as a balance was when we did this trail extension in the back that we ultimately got the grant from the state for, from KDOT, we took that money out of the Special Park Fund. When that grant went through and we sent them all the paperwork saying that it's done and so forth, that money was then put into a different fund, if I'm correct, and it, and then it was, right, and then it was re, it was refunded back to the Special Park Fund, and that was just under $1 million. So that was very helpful to making that fund healthier than it was before, because we did pay ourselves back with the grant money that we received from KDOT.
Okay.
There was also, and I believe it was Aquatic Center, when we went to bond that project, we go back and look at all the costs of the project, and we had paid about $300,000 of the project over the, it's been years now, from when you started that, and we were able to identify that money rolling into the total, and that it needed to be reimbursed for the bond proceeds. So by the time we added, kind of, I guess, since I've gotten here and been able to look at things and put things where, where they should go, we were able to identify, it was 1.3 million.
What was that last part?
So, we hadn't budgeted for at the time.
I'm having a little trouble hearing, I don't know if we can raise the volume. Is anybody else having trouble hearing?
1.3 million.
That microphone doesn't seem to be working.
Well, he's not close enough to it. It, it's difficult to hear tonight.
And it might be me, too. Check, check, okay.
What was that last part?
It's, so it's about 1.3 million that we didn't know about when we were putting the budget together, or we found out about the grant as we were putting the budget together. The bond proceeds were after the budget was done, because we did the bonds later. So, so we have monies that we weren't planning on. It's never extra money by any means, but it's money we had not planned for, so that is available in the cash balance to be able to do that, besides the fact that most of our out-year planning is about $500,000 per year, which is about the amount of money we bring in from the alcohol fund every year. So those two things together, it doesn't really eat into the balance a whole lot. So, so we're able to do a few one-time things that doesn't really impact it too much.
Ms. Phillips.
I would just ask, Chris, to explain again how the special, the alcohol tax fund comes back to us, that's in that whole process, because it's, I can hear it three different times, and it still, it's always learned another twist about that, that whole program.
Good. I guess it's a finance, kind of finance question. So the, all the money from Liquor by the Drink that's spent in the community of Leewood, that the tax on that, so at a restaurant, but not at a liquor store, the tax from that goes, the state, collected by the state, I believe they take a percent, 10%, 5% off the top, send us back the rest, and then we have to buy statute, state statute, it's split three ways, goes to, a third to the alcohol fund, a third to Special Parks and Rec, and a third to the general fund.
And the objective when it goes to special, the, the objective there was because if we enhance our parks, then we provide a better environment for, and which is proven to be, if you have good environments, you're less likely to use substances, is what the thought is behind that, right?
That was, if I remember right, Liquor by the Drink was passed in the middle in the eighties, so I have no idea what legislative intent was at the time, but that has been the formula since Liquor by the Drink passed.
So it automatically, as, that's where the $500, it's, that's about how much comes into that fund?
$500,000.
Yeah. So that's going to replenish itself every year.
Every year, yes.
Mr. Sipple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, was there, what was destined to be used from the Parks Fund? What projects were scheduled in '24, '25 to come out of that, which might not now occur?
Well, Don mentioned pickleball. That's not so much a financial issue as it is a timing issue and finding the location. So really, it's just, the projects, as he mentioned, are not going to be affected, whether they're, doesn't become affected, I think, until 2028. Eight. So, but by then, the projects we have identified already will have been funded. So those are the out-years where we have not identified any specific projects. There are some that are in there, like replacing the spray ground at the Aquatic Center, replacing the playground at Elon Park. We started putting the playground replacements in there because they have a life of about 20 years, and some of them are coming up already, Elon, Ironwoods.
But you're, you're saying none of this will be delayed if we follow Option C?
That's correct, because we have that additional 1.3 million that we always had, it just got reimbursed, if you will, or relocated back into the Special Park Fund, so it is there and available to complete the projects that we have identified.
And Mr. Sipple, that, that was my charge to staff, was to find an alternative that did not adversely impact existing or planned projects.
Yeah, I'm, you know, philosophically opposed to rob Peter to pay Paul, and I didn't want to delay some of the other things which our citizens feel are important. So, I mean, this newfound wealth, it's, it's amazing. It's just man from heaven, huh?
And it, it has the benefit of not having to rob from the Trails Maintenance Fund as well, which is, is important.
Thank you.
Or drain the, the Arts Fund.
Yes, Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. I want to thank you for charging the staff to look a little harder and make some considerations, because I did have serious concerns about borrowing or reducing the Trail Maintenance Fund. I feel like, as a frequent user of the trails, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, I'd love to figure out how we could count all the people, pay somebody to count the people on a trail on a Saturday afternoon, but, and, and that's a gem in our, you know, Leewood crown. So I, that concerned me that that was considered as an option. We're very fortunate, clearly, we are very fortunate to have money coming in from different sources. This project has specific frustration for me, only because I was on the Art Selection Committee for the first time, and it's all costing more than we thought, and nobody likes to find that out after they've made a decision, and a committee has made a decision and met for months. It's going to be a lovely piece, and I'm excited about it, but then I got less excited about it when it, we found out we had these challenges with regard to the site, the lifting of the site, the geography of the site, the costs and things like that. So I appreciate that, thanks to some great grant money that I, our staff, we only have that grant because of our excellent staff finding that money from our government, and also these, these, the way these funds are funded by those who drink alcohol in our community, so thanks to them, cheers to them. But my, my concerns are still such that we're paying so much money for this to be stored and hauled, to be transported, and, and I'm frustrated that we didn't know of that a year ago. We have huge facilities in this city, an old Parks and Rec facility and a new Parks and Rec facility, and a maintenance sheds and such, and I'm wondering, is there any way we can store this somewhere in Leewood, hide it at Ironwoods in the, in the golf sheds or somewhere? Is there somewhere we can store this to save that money, those, that thousands and thousands of dollars?
The storage actually, actually began in February, because the piece, which is in pieces, is being stored there now. And I'm, my opinion, after talking with the artist, is he wanted to keep it stored there.
There.
As he started bringing it up, because he's going to make four trips to bring it here, because he's got 75 rods and all the pieces of the sculpture, so that, that's the reasoning behind it.
I was thinking he was bringing it up in bits and storing it here, so I misunderstood that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and you, right, unload it, right.
So I get, and, and there's no way for us to get this installed by July 4th, when 10,000 people will visit our city to watch?
Well, we were saying installation on or before July 1. That's what's in the amendment, number two.
That's still realistic.
Yes, that's why we tried to bring, we're bringing everything to you tonight to discuss it all as a whole, and then being able to hopefully award the agreement, whether it's one or both, to Musselman and Hall, the contractor that we recommended, so that they can start, you know, start working on it, because that's a pretty short timeline, couple, two and a half, you know, three months.
Yeah.
Weather, so forth.
It's April, okay. I just worried that with July 1st on some documents, all it takes is one, one speed bump and one rainstorm, and all of a sudden, it's not done by July 3rd. But if that's a realistic goal...
I think one of the benefits, this is, only came out, I didn't know this at the time, when we met with the contractor to look at some cost savings, but Musselman and Hall actually did the roadway, when they raised the road down there for the wastewater plant, so they're pretty familiar with that area, which I think is, is just generally helpful for them being the contractor as well.
Okay. Excellent. All right, my last, my last bullet point with a big star next to it is a suggestion, a hope that for future art selection committees, there will be a more clear outline in the selection process that indicates that we don't just have a budget for the piece of art, but that we have a budget that includes potential refurb or storage or transportation or installation or raising a site three feet out of a floodplain, or all the, all the things that have happened or been discussed with regards to this piece that, because I think the group that I worked with to, to select a piece and then select a site, we were clueless about some of those very important pieces of the equation, and all of those pieces seemed to cost us a little bit more than we thought they might, so...
So to that point, we are looking at any future requests for proposals, putting some additional information in there.
Yes.
What you have in your packet tonight is the current policy.
Okay.
So we are, we have gone through Appy and the Arts Council, and there's some other recommendations in the policy that will be coming before you as a redline version that will, so what I'm hoping is, the addition to the RFP and to the policy will work together to help prevent something like that in the future.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions. Do the, do the numbers that we're looking at include adequate allocation for insurance and ongoing maintenance of the piece?
Well, we have $60,000 for maintenance in that art, CIP for art fund, so I would hope that that would be a yes.
Well, I, Chris, what I'm concerned about is the transport from New Orleans to Kansas City, the installation, and the rest of the insurance year for that piece. It's going to attract a lot of attention, and we want to make sure that we take care of it.
Well, I do know that once the contractor starts staging down there, there, they, if, if we get, so let's say the artist brings one load up, they will put up a construction, not a snow fence like some people are used to, they will put up a hard fence to protect those pieces.
Chain link fence.
Chain link, construction fence, I'm sure you've all seen them at, at some high, you know, profile projects. In regards to the insurance, I mean, he had some insurance in his agreement, if I recall, the original agreement, which was done, you know, in '22 or early '23, so...
Ms. Sipple's really getting at is, is, heaven forbid, if something should happen to this between New Orleans and Kansas City, who bears the risk of that casualty?
The artist.
The artist.
The artist, between there and here, and as far as after that, that would be up to Mr. Powell and, and our insurance carrier normally. I'm not going to quote an amount normally, it's not too overbearing for us to add it to our property insurance.
Okay, good. Well, my position on this is now that we've got this additional funding, easily obtainable, thanks to Mr. Cobby's review and aggressive analysis, thank you very much, I think my position would be we should go for the installation, and we should go for the parking lot and make it a first-class operation and not look back. I mean, this is, we've purchased the art piece, this is a slam dunk, in my, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Other comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Sunke.
I, I walked down, or I went down to the site yesterday, and I parked at the parking lot closest to the site, and it was 800 steps from that parking lot to the site. For context, it was 200 steps for me to walk from the parking lot in here. It took me under eight minutes to walk that, in an effort to avoid adding more impervious surface to the ground anywhere, and to save money, I, I would, I don't see a point, since we have the walkway, the, the trail that is already there to the site, it's, it's accessible. I think an eight-minute walk is easily doable for most people who would want to spend time with the art piece. Obviously, it's a, it's a big piece, and, and the major impact will be like on 435 going by, and for us driving by when I come down to this meeting on, on alternate Tuesdays or Mondays. So that, that would be my first thought. The other thing is, I'm, I sort of liked the idea of the Fund for Art reimbursing the other fund. If, if we truly think that's money that we're not going to use for anything else, then I guess it's fine not to reimburse it, but since it is art, it makes sense that, that we would be taking from future art pieces to help fund this extra expense here. So that's about all I had. I thought if we can save some money and not put in more concrete, I would, I would lean that way.
Yes, Ms. Gaiet.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. So the risk and responsibility during the piece transportation is on the artist, and then we have it upon delivery, is that right? It transfers to us upon delivery?
We would have it upon delivery, and then, as Patty mentioned, we would add whatever's there to our policy, to our schedules.
Okay, so, and he has to do four trips?
That's what he's telling us, four trips.
So then each bundle of pieces that he transports, then what about during the assembly? Because he puts it all together, right?
He does, and it's still his, it is intended, it is his risk until it is completely installed. He is responsible. Our last payment to him is not, is not due until it's all installed and up and ready to go.
So not delivery, not upon delivery of each? So not delivery, not upon delivery of each of the pieces?
Delivery and installation.
But delivery of the total installation. Got it, okay, perfect. And then another question is, you mentioned, and this is probably because I wasn't here during a lot of this, but you mentioned that there was a first extension to the agreement. Was there a cost associated with that first extension?
No, that was just an extension of time.
Of time, okay, perfect. And then my last question is, can you remind us again what's the size of the proposed parking lot?
I will defer to our engineer, off the top of my head. I don't recall, how many spots were there?
I think it was six or seven.
Yeah, how many stalls?
Twelve.
Yeah, so it's eight stalls plus a handicap stall.
Eight plus one handicap? Thank you.
Ms. Phil.
So that was one of my questions, thank you. Again, thank you for putting all the funds in the right bucket so that this all balanced itself out, and we're so glad you're on board. We obviously missed having all of our financial people onboard and running strong, and I love your initiative to ask them, how do we not go forward at the expense of any other fund? And I love Option 3 or C, whichever your alphabet or number inclined, which was taking the entire fund from, obviously, the Special Parks Fund, which has that money, and thank you again for the staff's creativity for getting the government fund for the trail over here at Row, and that does not impact the Parks, or the Arts Fund, and it does not impact the trail's maintenance. So that's just a win-win-win. I couldn't agree with you more about pervious surface, I mean, it's, you know, we should never let anybody have a circle driveway, you know, I mean, I just, and I couldn't be more on with you, but on this case, with, where would the handicap space be if we didn't put in the parking? They would have to do the 800 feet and push?
Well, the lot, and I'm not sure, Mr. Sunco, which one you were referring to, if you were referring to the Mission Farms lot, or if you were referring to the lot down by the baseball fields, when you talked about 200 or 800?
It was, it was the lot just, the water treatment plant is across the street.
Okay, so that's the lot, that's the lot by the T-ball fields?
Yeah, that, it must have been the T-ball fields. I saw soccer goals, so I thought, maybe not baseball, okay, yeah. So it was that one, so it was right on, you cross the street there, and then you're on the trail, and then you would cross the street back over
Correct.
To get to the installation site.
So there are two handicap stalls in that lot, the 800-step lot that Mr. Sunco referred to, otherwise, if you parked in Mission Farms, I mean, you'd have to find a handicap spot there, I suspect.
So again, having gone to, thank you very much for my VIP parking pass for the fireworks, it's one of my great perks of this, so I always, you know, I'm always turning left when you're not supposed to, and showing them your deal that you can get in, and so I recognize how many special vehicles we have right there at that intersection, trying to handle traffic, and also thinking about handicap. I think this is the right thing to do, to put the parking in there, but I would like to, because I've been a big proponent of pervious surface, and I know David will tell me that they're a maintenance issue, because we've got one in Elon, but I would like to ask if we do approve that, that we go back and revise, and revisit pervious surface, because I still think letting grass grow between pavers is okay plan, just so that it's not muddy and you can park your car, because it's not going to be a, it's not going to be a high traffic, it's not like through the drive-in at McDonald's, it's not going to get that kind of traffic, I would not imagine. So I would like to go ahead and have that closer handicap, we do have an aging population, and I think there's more people that have temporary parking, you know, because they've got a knee, and I've got a friend who only uses his handicap when everything else is parking, and he doesn't want to walk two blocks, because he's trying to, he's still trying to say, "I don't need to have knee surgery," right? Those, so anyway, so again, I think sometimes when this whole conversation comes about, I have to think of Michelangelo and doing the Sistine Chapel, and I'm sure that that didn't start and finish the way everybody envisioned it, because I do think this is going to be one spectacular thing, and I'm with you, Lisa, I'm just going to put on my little nightly prayer list, installed by July 1, installed by July 1, so thank you for everyone's work to make this possible.
Dr. Castor.
Yeah, I had a question, is it possible that the parking lot could be added at a later time without disturbing the art piece or any significant structure surrounding that area?
Well, it certainly could always be added later. My suspicion would be, it would be possibly more expensive to do so. I think part of the challenge with this piece, that's positive but can also have an impact, is it was designed to be an interactive, engaging piece, so people are encouraged to walk through it, bike through it, whatever, so, you know, it's just where would they park to do that, I guess is my thought about that, but yes, the answer to your question, it certainly could be done later.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Phil.
I guess I would share, one of the past council member, Andrew, said as he was going out, "Just remember, concrete never gets any cheaper," so, and then I would really hope that we wouldn't have to disturb the site twice, because, just let those plantings get planted and grow.
Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. The staff is to be commended for finding these funds, it's a great relief, but even though that we have the funds, I don't think we should lose sight of the total cost, and this is a very expensive installation, and I would be in favor in any, some methods of savings money were detailed in our packet this evening, and I would be in favor of doing those things, and I am not in favor of the parking lot because of the added expense. I think if we find that we'd like to add it later, it can be readdressed, but I'm still in having sticker shock on the installation, even though we've done an excellent job in finding those funds, it's still, it's real money, and, you know, we can always find a way to spend money, I just think we still, even though we have an excess, we have to keep an eye on the bottom line and be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars, and for that reason, I'm not in favor of the parking lot, and am in favor of any savings that we can garner in going forward with the plans.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Sippel.
A question for Public Works, if we do some of this work in-house around the sculpture, is that lawn going to be irrigated, are we going to have a sprinkler system down there?
We, did you want to answer? We don't intend to put a irrigation system, though, that's not in the cost. We did intend to take out the hydro seeding and all the fertilization, and we would do the sodding ourselves in the fall with the big sod rolls, because if not, it's such a, you know, it's such a big area, even though we did shrink it down, I'm just afraid it wouldn't look good for a piece that, you know, of that signature piece like that, I'm afraid it would not be pleasing to the eye as it was with the sculpture, so I think we estimated those costs at like $8300 to $8700 for us to do the installation of the sod.
So if we would follow through with Ms. Larson's recommendation of not doing the parking lot, would we sod over that whole area as well?
We would not, we didn't include that in the cost, I think that was going to be closer to $13,000 or $14,000, and there wouldn't be any reason to put sod, we'd probably just seed that area, be far enough away that it wouldn't be beneficial.
Would that look odd, having grass around the sculpture and bare dirt around everything else?
Well, we're not, we're not going to sod the entire two acres, I mean, we're not going to sod all the way to the trail or all the way to Mission Road, we're going to try to keep that cost down by just determining how far out we want to take it, because, again, we would be talking about at least probably $14,000 to sod it, and again, keeping it alive will be our job, once we get the sod in, we'll take the water truck there, and our team will water it like they did at the North Lake.
Thank you.
Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. I just want to throw one last comment in there that I would agree with the comments that have been made about foregoing the parking lot at this time. I feel like this piece can be enjoyed by pedestrians, joggers, walkers, stroller people, as well as bike riders, very easily, they can get off their bikes and walk through it. There will be plenty of opportunities in the near future, I'm sure, to reconsider what's on the rest of that property that takes us down to the first fields where Mr. Sunco parked, there may be community gardens there someday, there may be pickleball courts, and we can build a parking lot when it's time to give more access to those. We do not have parking lots at many of our large public art pieces, we've never had that conversation before as a required amenity to a public art piece, and I think that while accessibility for handicapped residents and folks is a consideration, we can add that maybe in a year or two when we're doing something else, but I don't think that should be the only reason that we do the parking lot at this time, so I'd like to push that down the road.
Other comments? Ms. Phil.
I'm just going to make one more appeal for the fact that we've talked about how significant this project is, it is our Michelangelo, and there is a good, you know, I can just think of a mother with two kids, and it wouldn't be nice, she has an aging parent in a stroller, and she wants to park there. So I think from, you know, 10,000 people come to the Fourth of July, so we do have a huge influx of people, so we have the money for the parking lot, we won't have to retread and re-muddy up the grounds, and we are going to have the volume of people coming there, and I'd like to make it accessible to everyone. The young lady that helped us get the funding and was the proponent, spoke, was one of the spokesmen from North Leewood about accessibility, I just believe that having more handicap closer is really an imperative. She passed away in fifth grade two years ago, so, but I'm very, she created a strong impression, meeting her on her wheelchair and advocating for our first all-accessible playground, that that is the constituency, not to mention our aging population, that could benefit, and we have the money, concrete's not getting any cheaper, nor is the installation, and people are going to want to come and see this piece, it's going to be amazing, and for that reason, I want to make sure people can access it.
Thank you, Ms. Phil. Well, I'll weigh in a little bit here, and I suspect that I may be a little bit in the minority, but it seems to me that, you know, as we've noted, this has been a tremendous investment, and it's a piece of art whose intent, and Ms. Blessing may correct me if I'm wrong, but whose intent was to be enjoyed in a personal way, the presence at the art. It's unlike the dancers where we drive by it, or some of the ones along Tomahawk Creek Way, the design and the artist's intent was actually to make it an experience that you experience up close and personal. I will also say that as one with an arthritic hip that even struggles with the 200 steps from the parking lot, and I'm always sure not to park in the closest one, but in as far away as possible, that I struggle to get to the office every day, and so I share the concerns that Ms. Phil does about the needs to make it accessible so that all can get to it, and that 800 steps might well just be enough to dissuade me from, I might have to just enjoy it from the car as I drive by. And I guess the other thought is, yes, we could always do it, but we're going to have this, we've had this conversation where the last, you know, I came to city council meetings for governing body meetings for, pardon me, six months during the, during the course of the campaign, and observed this body's struggle with the whole concept, and, you know, I would hate to add yet another chapter to this struggle when it comes time a year from now to start talking about a parking lot. So I would advocate, and again, I don't have a vote unless you all come to a tie, and I think with Julie gone, you don't come to a tie, but I would advocate for the parking lot, and for us, one, we've built something that, you know, it's almost like a bridge to nowhere, if you build the art piece and you can't get to it, and again, with all due respect to Mr. Sunco, who made the 800-step walk, I've not made it, so I have no reason to doubt what he says, and I agree with the concerns about costs, but at this point in time, I would advocate that we bring this to a close, that we include the parking lot, thanks to the good work of Mr. Cobb and Ms. Claxton and Ms. Doherty, I don't want to leave her out, we have found the funds that permit us to do this, so I would advocate that we include the parking lot. I would also, I'm a little bit up in the air on the financing mechanism, whether we use B or C, as someone mentioned, this is art, I think it was Mr. Sunco mentioned, this is art, and I'm told that historically, the installation has come from the Capital Improvements Fund for Art, and so I could see the $194,000 coming from the Art Fund, and the balance coming from the Special Park Fund. On the other hand, I like the idea of not completely depleting the CIP for Art and go through with the entire amount from the Special Parks Fund, but I'm ambivalent on whether we do B or C, I do think we should do either B or C, avoid hitting the Trail Maintenance Fund, and avoid mortgaging out in the future the Art CIP, but again, that's just my perspective, and I've tried very hard to stay quiet until you all had your voices, so, Mr. Sippel.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mayor. I had one question, if we follow alternative B or C, will this push back the acquisition of any art pieces that are in the queue, that the Art Committee would like to have erected in '24, '25, or '26 in the city?
So what is currently in the queue is the mural project, it's in the queue, whether or not it moves forward, that would be a decision for Arts Council and/or Appy, and Fire Station 1, those are the two that are in the queue.
But using alternative B or C, as the mayor has indicated, would that push those back because of the availability of funds?
I presume it would push, B would push it back, C would not.
Yeah, that's correct, B would, C would not.
Thank you.
What was the second art?
Fire Station 1.
Fire Station 1, gotcha.
Which frankly, at this point in time, we don't even have a plan for that whole parcel, so that's fairly, don't get me wrong, I'm not disagreeing that there should be art placed there at some point in time, but we're a far piece, I think we need to have a plan for that whole spot before we start talking about placing art there, that's, again, my view.
And our garage doors first.
We're going to get those first.
Yeah, the garage doors first.
Garage doors need to come first, that's right, but they're on order, they've been on order for several months, so, and I think they're actually supposed to be delivered here shortly, but...
You ready for a motion?
Other comments? If not, I would like to take this up in two pieces, first, the question of whether we do the parking lot or not, we can take, I'll take a motion however anybody wants to put it, and we'll put it to a vote and see where we go from there, and then I'd be interested in getting a motion on how to proceed with the financing, and then to the actual agenda items, and that being authority to me to sign some contracts, if you don't mind if we take that approach. So is there a motion about proceeding with either or both of the parking lot and the installation?
Move to approve Option C, which is the parking lot, and, they're around $650,000 Move to approve option C, which is the parking lot and the around $650,000 mark of the installation and the parking lot.
Second?
All right. There's combining two ideas in one there, but if that's, if everybody's comfortable with voting on that, that's fine. Is there a motion of second? Is there additional discussion?
Can I clarify?
Yes.
Because I thought it was going to be A or B, and she said C, so.
Well, that was, that's why I said it, Deb's, Deb's motion kind of combined the two questions, the question of the parking lot and/or the.
The funding option?
The installation plus the third funding option, which was to take the whole 650 out of the Special Parks Fund.
Okay, I thought we were going to break them into two.
I, I had intended to break them, and if you would prefer, and again, if Ms. Phila was comfortable, we can take them one at a time. Would you prefer that, Ms. Harrison?
Uh, I think I can make that work. No, I think I'll be all right.
You think you're all right with what we have?
Had my brain ready to go one way.
Ms. Larson, I think you have some strong feelings. Perhaps do you, is it okay if we move forward with this motion?
Sure.
Okay. Discussion over the motion. We've had some discussion generally, and the motion really takes, addresses both questions. So any additional questions, comments? If not, because this is a motion, I don't believe that it calls for a roll call. Although if it's not, if there's not, Mr. Powell, you're giving me the evil eye.
No, you don't need a roll call, but if you would like one, you can certainly request one.
Okay. Well, let's see if we have a clear, let's see if we have a clearer vote on a voice vote. And if I'm not clear on the voice vote, then we'll, we'll, we'll come back to a roll call vote. So all those in favor of moving forward with both the parking lot and the installation and funding it with the entire ballpark, $650,000 to come from the Special Parks Fund without negative impact on the Trail Maintenance Fund and without reimbursement from the Arts CIP, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. We'll go to a roll call vote. I think I know how that comes out, but I want to make sure that we do. Mr. Powell, if you would call the roll, please.
Certainly. Councilmember Phila?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Nay.
Councilmember Sipple?
Aye.
Councilmember Sunkel?
Nay.
Councilmember Guyad?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Nay.
Councilmember Castor?
Nay.
Okay. The motion fails on a vote of four to three. So I think that that, we know where that heads, but to be appropriate, then we need another motion of how, that directs me and the city staff of how to proceed. Is there such a motion?
I would make a motion to proceed with the installation without the parking lot included in the costs.
Okay. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Castor, Ms. Larson moves. Mr. Castor, seconds that we proceed with only the installation. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
That time, I think I've heard enough to conclude that we do have a majority that is in favor of the motion. The motion to proceed with the installation, not the parking lot, carries. That takes us to the question of how to fund. And I don't have the numbers quite worked, the algebra in my head yet, but I don't know that we need to for purposes of this motion. Is there a motion relative to how we would proceed to finance or fund the installation?
Mayor, can I interrupt for just a moment? On the last motion, who voted no?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ms. Guyad and Ms. Philo?
Okay, that's what I got down.
So is, is there a motion with how to find, to fund this?
Uh.
Because I, I don't know that I'm willing to sign a contract until you all tell me how we're going to fund this.
I moved.
Go ahead.
Ms. Larson?
I'd be happy, and I'd make a motion to fund the entire installation cost from the Special Parks Fund with no impact to our trail maintenance, nor to our CIP art fund.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of moving forward with funding the installation of the art piece through the Special Parks Fund with no plan for reimbursement from the art CIP or adverse impact on the Trail Maintenance Fund, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
The vote is, one, two, three, four, five, six to one in favor with Member Sunkel casting the opposing vote. So that motion carries. Now takes us to, I've lost my pieces of paper here, but now takes us to the resolution approving and authorizing me to execute an amendment number two to the Art Work Commission and Ownership Agreement between the City and Curious Forum LLC in an amount not to exceed an additional $23,500, amending the scope to add storage and delivery items. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Phila. Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Any discussion?
A quick question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. On the first, first page of the amendment on, in the contract number two, the last paragraph, the last sentence, it says, "In no event shall City be responsible to pay artists a total amount of $7,500 for storage reimbursement." I think that was supposed to, intended to read more than $7,500.
Ms. Bennett, do you care to opine?
I need to hire Ms. Larson to proofread my amendment. She's absolutely right. All right.
Thank you. Great catch, Ms. Larson. So with that modification, they will move forward, given the appropriate revisions to the contract then. Any other discussion? Again, great catch, Ms. Larson. All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number two to the Art Work Commission Ownership Agreement, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved unanimously. Takes us to a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a construction agreement between the City and Musselman and Hall Contractors LLC in a, in an amount not to exceed. And can the city administrator tell me what that number is? Thank you. Pertaining to the installation of the 75th anniversary art piece. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of authorizing me to execute the construction agreement between the City and Musselman for the installation of the 75th anniversary art piece, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, and I, the motion is approved.
Mayor, I, I'm sorry. I need a, a quick clarification on that one. The agreement itself is set up right now on the total amount. We will take that motion as approving that agreement for the total amount with a direction to staff to bring back a change order to take out the parking lot amount, so that it ends up being the net 400. I can't get the whole amount, but with the five cents on the, that, that Ms. Doddard just gave.
As long as we get to the right place at the end of the day, when we're buying installation and not a parking lot, I'm comfortable with that.
You will, and you will see the change order on the 15th, at the, on our next.
Okay. So we'll need, we'll need to, can we do that on the consent agenda on the 15th?
I think we can.
Okay.
So, so you're in essence saying we just delayed it for two weeks?
I, I.
No, I think, I think what she's suggesting is we'll, we'll sign the contract and have them start moving forward on installation, with the understanding there will be a change order that takes out the parking lot. So no delay, correct?
Yes.
Because I don't think anyone here is interested in a delay. The First of July is a magic date, so. All right. Brings us to new business. Thanks to the council and to the governing body for a great discussion. It was really well done. I appreciate the time and, and thought that went into it. Under new business, we have a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a master equity lease agreement between the City and Enterprise Fleet Management. Mr. Lay, welcome.
Well, thank you. David Lay, Public Works Director. And with me, I have Kenneth Olson with Enterprise Lease back here. And so I'm going to end the packet. I gave the process for how we currently obtain vehicles. Public Works is requesting to go from purchasing vehicles to leasing vehicles. And so I'll give the top reasons on why Public Works would like to switch to that, and then we'll have Ken provide a fleet synopsis for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Lay.
Okay. So the reason for leasing, so since COVID, we've been really struggling with trying to purchase vehicles. Pre-COVID, we could order vehicles anytime throughout the year. There was really no issue. Post-COVID, we are now stuck ordering vehicles at short timeframes, and vehicles are offered throughout the year. So we'll have, if we want to purchase an F-150, it may be open for, the window may be three weeks in July. And then we get the price list a couple of weeks before that, and we're scrambling around to meet with all the departments, trying to figure out what options they want, and then get these vehicles ordered. So it's just taking a lot of staff time in order to manage that process. In 2022, 2023, Ford ended up canceling half our orders. And so what happened then is our fleet started growing a little bit older, and then we still had to purchase five vehicles off a dealer lot. When we purchased directly through Ford, we get the co-op, co-op pricing, which is about a 10% to 20% reduction in cost. But when we had to go through purchasing, purchasing off dealers' lots, we had to actually pay MSRP. And in some cases, those vehicles were three hours away from us, so we had to send the staff to go get them. With Enterprise, they have other options potentially that would be available to us at that reduced rate. So they would be able to provide us a different vehicle if Ford or whoever we go through cancels an order. Enterprise, as I mentioned, we do get 10% to 20% off going through Enterprise. They still get that same cut on vehicles, so we would still be paying the same amount for the vehicles just going through that leasing. The other thing is currently, we are at eight to 10 years with purchasing vehicles, so the vehicle ages between eight to 10 years. With going to Enterprise, we'd be looking at doing a three-year lease. So we'd be flipping vehicles much quicker, which is going to be, it really, for staff, really helps lower the maintenance cost on these vehicles, because we'll just be mostly changing fluids. And so that'll really help free up other staff time to maintain the fire apparatus vehicles, which currently fires spending about $100,000 per year maintaining those vehicles. So we'll be able to help bring that cost down. And then also, any future changes? If council wanted to go to an electrified fleet, we would be able to do that in, over a three-year period instead of eight to 10 years. And so those are really the big reasons from Public Works on why we'd like to go through the lease program.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. Ms. Philo?
So if you decided to keep the vehicles four years or five years, is that an option?
Yeah. So, so I didn't explain it very well. I think Ken will probably touch on that. So it's a, Ken, his team will meet with each department head, and they will, each department will decide how long they want to keep a vehicle. So for some of those vehicles that get extensive outfitting, of course, it makes more sense to keep those a little bit longer, because there is kind of that big upfront cost to outfit a vehicle. But it's really up to the department director and the city administrator on how quick to turn vehicles over.
Great that you have that flexibility.
Mr. Sipple?
Mr. Lay, the comment, oops, on the second bullet item there. You, you bought these vehicles at MSRP. Is there no bargaining involved when a municipality buys a vehicle?
In 2022, 2023, there was not, because at that time, they struggled even keeping vehicles on the lots. And so we were lucky to be able to find a vehicle that met our needs. And so we, when we called some of the local dealers, they didn't even want to work with us, because we wanted to pay cash, and they were wanting us to finance it through them. And so that became a big issue.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Lay? Well, if you could introduce your guest again and have him state his name.
Here's Kenneth Olson, so.
Thank you. And business address for our record, welcome, sir.
Which one did you, one of the analysis or this analysis?
The analysis is finer, and, and I have it all here, so I can kind of walk through some high-level stuff.
Okay.
Well, good, good evening, and my name is Ken. I'm Ken Olson. I'm with Enterprise Fleet Management. And thank you all for having me tonight. Also, before I dive in, wanted to thank David and Don and all the city staff that has been involved over the past months to a year and working through this process. So from an agenda standpoint, really wanted to give you a high-level overview of who, who we are and a few core areas that I feel are important, that you all understand. And then walk through the vehicle and operational sides of our program, and then work through the fleet analysis at a high level. So from a high-level standpoint, we are the same company as Enterprise Mobility. You're probably familiar with us from the rental car department. On my division, the fleet management side, we essentially leverage that infrastructure, and we have a lot of tools, resources, people, and everything that we own and operate from having a few million vehicles out there. And we leverage that to help entities like yours with what we consider medium-sized fleets save money and operate more efficiently and effectively. From a role structure standpoint, my position is really designing the partnerships, analyzing what you're doing today, figuring out what pieces of our program would be a good fit. We do have a Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Award, and then designing and customizing the initial fleet strategy and financial structure with the team. From there, as David mentioned, we do have local account teams, local client strategy managers, who would take over for me from a strategy perspective. And this team will meet with you typically about four, or your staff typically about four times per year. In one of those meetings, we're analyzing over the last budget year, last 12 months, what do we do financially, operationally, what could we have done better in doing an annual review. In the second meeting, we're forecasting out really the next 12 to 24 months of what your vehicle needs are. David mentioned, there's been some challenges in acquiring vehicles, and we've always, over the last 60, 65 years, had that very proactive strategy, but it's really helped our clients over the past years, especially with COVID and the, the auto industry as a whole. But really, the core piece there is, we're here for a partnership. We want to be at the table with your staff and helping them every step of the way. We're not just here to sell vehicles and walk away. From a flexibility standpoint, every entity partners with us a little bit different. So to, to give you an idea of this, on the operational side, Unified Government, Lenexa, Prairie Village, with these three entities, they only use us for what I consider the vehicle side. So purchasing the vehicles, upfitting, funding, and resale. A few others, Andover, Oswatomie, Wellington, Arc City. With these four entities, they use us for that vehicle side, but they also use us for maintenance programs, for fuel. Some use us for telematics, insurance. So through that Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Award, it's very customized, and it can grow and change organically over the years as the partnership develops. Same goes from a strategy perspective, and we, we made it, we've actually designed this model a few different ways and with this analysis that was put together. But to give you an example, the city of Lenexa, they flipped out their entire fleet right out of, right out of the gate. City of Salina, we did a three-year implementation. And then Prairie Village, we did a, a five-year implementation. So it's very flexible and very customized and based around your, your budget. Last piece, before I dive in a little bit, the biggest impact that we can bring to, to the entity is really the, the budget impact. And David mentioned this a little bit, but you have very strong buying power in, in the good times, from a government incentive and, and buying power on the front end. Enterprise sells more used vehicles than anyone. We sell vehicles extremely well on the back end. And then we figure out based around that vehicle's mileage patterns, how do you want to pay for that vehicle? So in this analysis, we have an equity lease model. And to give you an idea of, of how this works, a lot of our entities over the past years have, have rotated some of their vehicles out after 12 months. I saw some SUVs sitting outside, SUVs, pickup trucks. And with Unified Government, for example, back in 2020, we were buying pick, F-250s for about $32,000. And we would fund that vehicle from 32 down to a remaining balance of $25,000 over a 12-month span. We then would sell that vehicle, and the timing worked well, given the, the auto industry. But we sold that vehicle for over $32,000, put that money back into an equipment reserve fund to offset the cost of the, the next vehicle that they were leasing for another 12-month span. So that's just one example. Not telling you that all the vehicles will be at a 12-month term. We, in the analysis, it averaged at 36 months. But to the question that was asked before, we can get out sooner, we can extend out longer, so very flexible from a term and mileage standpoint. Any questions from a high-level standpoint?
Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. My question might be for David. Been here eight years and didn't know we had 76 vehicles. This does not include the Chiefs fleet, right?
That's correct. It's 76. It's the non-pursuit vehicles.
That's probably 50 more cars than I would have guessed that the city of Leewood had. And so that being said, I'm looking at this list, our fleet profile. Fascinating. Are we, have we, are we most economical in terms of, like, full-size sedan? So that's like a four-passenger sedan, right? Two, four-door. Any chance we could go to smaller cars for the people? I mean, like, if it's a codes enforcement guy, it's one guy in a car, not six people in a car. Or like these SUVs that are four-by-fours? Or like these SUVs that are four-by-fours versus four-by-twos? Can we go with a, is there any situation when we can go with a smaller, cheaper vehicle? Oh, thank you. So much better. So could we, could we downsize and still have the job being done all the time?
Yeah, to answer that question, Enterprise Works, they analyze the fleet, and they look at which vehicles are not being utilized as much, and they make recommendations on how to even shrink your fleet. So that a way, you know, we're going to start looking here at City Hall, sharing vehicles, so we don't have vehicles sitting out there for three months without being driven, and then having the right-sized vehicles for, for the job.
There you go. I am curious about who's driving the minivan, because even I don't drive a minivan, so who knew the city had a minivan? For all of its, you know, mom carpooling. Okay, well, just so that, I'm glad that that's a, a service that you offer, that we're analyzing and being, again, fiscally responsible with the money that we've been trusted with. That's a lot of cars, but I know we have a lot of folks doing good jobs every day that need to move around the city, but thank you.
Yeah, and there, there's almost always a, a right typing and right sizing opportunity as we go through this exercise. And as we mentioned, some of the vehicles are fairly aged, and from that perspective, there's certainly going to be a, a few additional spares that are around. But one of the analysis that we provide is a total cost of ownership or a cent per mile, mile analysis. And what we will find is, in some cases, we may even go up to a bigger car, or a nicer model, or a crew cab versus a regular cab. And the reason behind some of that is from a cent per mile standpoint, sometimes we can sell those vehicles better on the, on the back end. But at the end of the day, the, the choice is always up to the staff and you all from a council perspective. But we have the tools and analysis to provide the recommendations of what's going to be most cost-effective.
David, just one question. I, it speaks for itself, but I'm still kind of stunned. We have two SUVs that are 20 years old? Can you even get parts for a 20-year-old SUV?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, believe it or not, we do have some, so some of the SUVs that don't get used as much, they have, you know, when they get to 10 years old, typically it's when we sell it, we'll replace it, but then we will move it to another department that has maybe a 20-year-old vehicle, they'll get a 10-year-old vehicle. And we're actually doing that with, with the IT department. They have an older SUV. I believe it is one of the 20-year-old vehicles, and we're replacing one of our inspectors' explorers, and so the IT will be getting a 10-year-old vehicle. It'll be new to them, but.
I'm just astonished. I do, 20-year-old car, wow.
That won't happen with this program. We will be flipping vehicles a lot quicker than that.
Mr. Siffle.
Question for Enterprise. Can you, if the departments have a preference, Ford over GM over Ram trucks, can you get all of those? Or do you kind of propose or recommend that we stay with one manufacturer?
Yeah, so we have every make, every model, every option available with all the manufacturers. Ford, Ram, Chevy, of course, and then we've got Tesla, Toyota, Nissan, all the different manufacturers that are available. Being a government entity, there's not a, whether you buy 10 vehicles or 100 vehicles in a year, there's not substantially difference from a price standpoint. So with, with that, it's really from, from utilization and having the right tool for the job, we want to make sure the right vehicle. But we have, being that we do have all the manufacturers, we can certainly make recommendation, both on the front end from a cost perspective, and from a total cost of ownership, what the right vehicle is. But it's the staff's decision if they, you know, if they want a Ford for that vehicle, and, and that's what you all want, we will absolutely, that's the vehicle we'll bring in.
Thank you.
And that really leads into the acquisition piece. And we essentially have four different ways that we can procure the vehicles on your behalf. So we have the largest used fleet in the country, with all of our rental vehicles and all of our fleet management vehicles coming off of lease. We have the largest dealership network. We purchase vehicles on my side from the dealerships. We deliver vehicles to dealerships. Our rental company buys. So just a massive network from a dealership perspective. And then we also have additional pools of vehicles from aftermarket pools, and then our own enterprise vehicles, that we have some additional inventory available. That being said, about 90% of our government vehicles are ordered direct from the manufacturers. So again, we will spec these vehicles out, every option, every feature, spec them out exactly as your team needs them. Order that vehicle. If there is any upfitting needs, we will get that vehicle delivered to KCOM, or NAPID, or whatever aftermarket vendor we're using. Or we can simply deliver the truck, and the team can outfit that vehicle on their own. We will handle the logistics of getting that vehicle outfitted and delivered to you all, ready to go. At the same time, we deliver that vehicle, we will pick up the age unit, whether it's a city vehicle that's outside right now, or into the future, an enterprise vehicle, and we will sell that vehicle on your behalf. We sell vehicles the same way that we sell all of our rental fleet. We're selling direct to our wholesale and franchise buyers that purchase, I think it's 2.3 million vehicles last year. So we sell them extremely well. Typically, we're about 9% to 10% above the commercial value index or auction value. But as mentioned before, the real value is our team always analyzing, when's the right time to get out of that specific vehicle, and bringing that to, to your attention to, to sell that vehicle at the right time. So essentially, we put those two components together, the buying power, the resale abilities, and figure out how do we want to pay for the vehicles? We have essentially three different ways that you can pay for the vehicles. We do have a self-fund model that essentially allows you to pay cash for the vehicles. We have a net lease model. This is your traditional lease. There's fees, penalties, wear and tear. We keep the equity when the vehicles are sold. Very few of our government entities leverage this, but it, it is available. And about 95% of our clients, and especially in the government space, leverage our, our equity lease model, and that's what is in this analysis here. And, and really, all it is, is a bank finance down to a remaining balance, based around that vehicle's holding pattern and the mileage structure. And then when we sell that vehicle, you get the equity. Okay? There's no fees for over mileage, wear and tear, early termination. It's all based around the equity of the vehicle. So we know maybe a vehicle's estimated at 7,500, they put on 15, 15,000 that year. That's absolutely okay. You're just going to get slightly less equity, but our team's always analyzing that and making sure that we're getting out at the right time, based around those variables. Yes, sir?
Let's talk about savings. Over the course of three, three years or so, what is the, the term of your agreement? Three years?
So the master equity lease agreement is essentially indefinite. The actual vehicle terms itself is based around that specific unit. So we will have vehicles set up, and in this analysis, we have vehicles set up everywhere from 12 to 60 months. But you can get, we can get out sooner or extend out longer at any time for that specific vehicle.
Well, maybe this is a question for Mr. Cobby or Mr. Lay, but how much money will the city save by taking this alternative?
And I can.
953?
So based upon the, the model there, there's $954,000 in savings over a 10-year span. And we have redesigned this model a few different ways, but in, in that analysis, there's $954,000. And really, what that's taking into consideration is that the, your current structure today of buying eight vehicles per year, paying cash for those units, running them. Your current cycle pattern is essentially nine and a half years, and running those vehicles, paying cash and running them to nine and a half years. Higher maintenance, higher fuel cost, and your current budget of $721,000 is the baseline. And then through the implementation, we did a five-year implementation in this model. So over the next five years, we would implement all 76 vehicles in this case, and bring those vehicles in. With this term, we have it set up at 4.73 years. That won't change. So some vehicles will get out sooner, some vehicles will be extended out longer, as I mentioned. And that's why, in this analysis, we always try to explain it as it is high-level, it is proof of concept, because we want to bring those recommendations. We didn't know COVID was going to happen, we didn't know vehicle costs were going to rise, the resale market was going to change. So from that perspective, we're always working with you to beat this analysis and bring those different recommendations as we go.
Ms. Phyllis?
So is that, that 22-year-old SUV, the one that's dragging down our, our miles per gallon to 12? It seems like a really low for mostly city driving. I know, but still.
Yeah, and, and city driving, based upon the age of the fleet, just use national averages for the, those types of vehicles. Same with the fuel. At the time, this model was built $3.75. That, that's going to change, and it's already gone down since then, and it will go back up. So from, from that perspective, it's a fluid number.
Other questions? If not, we thank, or, yes, Mr. Siffle?
One quick question, maybe for Mr. Lay and Mr. Cobby. Will this make your life easier in terms of managing your fleet, so you don't have to worry about breakdowns and things like that, and you can get a truck where you need it right away?
Yeah, this will definitely help free up a lot of staff time in Public Works. We will be utilizing Enterprise to outfit these vehicles too. So when they receive the vehicle, they'll take them to get outfitted, and then deliver the vehicle to us, ready to go. Currently, we receive those vehicles, and then we have to try to schedule the outfitting, and we have to get the vehicle over. So we're having two people drive over to drop the vehicle off. So this is going to definitely help Public Works staff time there. And then also on the back end, as I mentioned, the maintenance part of it's going to go, you know, our staff will be having more free time to be able to help fire department with their vehicles, and try to bring some of those costs down too.
So if you have a vehicle broken down, will Enterprise give you a loaner?
They, they do not. I mean, you can rent. If we need, if we need to, we can rent a vehicle.
We can include it in the cost from a maintenance perspective, but typically, we leverage the state contracts from a maintenance perspective.
But you have enough vehicles to get by without having to worry about getting a temporary vehicle in there.
Be similar to how we do it now. If a vehicle goes down, and it's required to have, we would have to rent another vehicle.
And it's your call, David, as to whether or not it's a Ford, or a Chevy, or a Toyota, or whatever.
We will use, the fleet supervisor will assist each director on which vehicles, but for the most part, since we're just changing fluids, and we don't really store a lot of parts on hand, we order them in. So if we need an oil filter, we're ordering that the day before we're doing the filter change. So we don't really, it doesn't really matter to us if it's a Ford or a GM.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Harrison?
One quick one. David, when you say outfit our vehicles, because these aren't the Chiefs vehicles, are you talking about more than like a trailer hitch? I mean, what kind of outfitting are we talking about?
So on pickup trucks, we get. So we'll put snowplows on them. We do lights and things like that on these vehicles. So, yeah, on a sedan, there's not a lot of outfitting, other than just putting the Leewood logo on it.
There you go.
And we do that ourselves.
Okay. Thank you.
One additional piece to add on that. We can do the emergency response vehicles, the police vehicles, and we also, and we also have dump bodies, crane bodies, service bodies, that we can do from a more medium-duty type, type operation. We took those out, just from a modeling standpoint, these are the vehicles that are coming in and out of the fleet quicker, but we do have the availability to help with those different specialty items.
While you do this one okay, maybe you'll get another contract next year.
Will you continue to be our contact person?
So I will be your account executive. I'm, I'm office here in the, the Merriam-Kansas office, so yes, I will be around. You will also have an additional client strategy manager, and that's the person that will meet with you four times a year. And then you'll also have a, a team behind them. There's an account fleet coordinator, who, who would be your administrative person, and then the rest of our team, there's roughly 30 to 40 folks that are right here in Merriam, Kansas.
Any more questions for Mr. Lay? Yes, Ms. Phyllis?
Ready for motion?
Absolutely.
Move to approve the relation, the resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a master equity lease agreement between the City and Enterprise Fleet Management.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Siffle. Discussion of the motion. If not, all those in favor of authorizing the mayor to execute the master equity lease agreement, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.